So I'm going to ask you guys, if I call your name to come up here. I'm going to read a statement to you to start off. Mr. Taylor. You want to restate it?
I might not.
I'm going to restate it to you. You read, say, "I do," and then read them right here. And then, after we're done, you can raise your hand. I'll go over to the office.
Hang on. It's not even.
That just doesn't make a good visual with that cart there. Why don't we do it back in front of the end? Because that's like so.
And the camera can't see it.
I can turn the camera. I've used it.
It might be better up by the end and front. Because you all aren't covering it. I thought you'd be blocking it.
Well, he can zoom in, can't he?
This is what you're supposed to call.
Oh, but I mean with that, if you guys don't.
Yeah, he can zoom in. Yeah. Can use his feet here.
I'm asking him.
All right, Chrissy, you're up.
Yeah. This is nice for the end in the middle. Otherwise, you're all full of stuff.
Whitney. You can come up here if you want. Are you ready? Just let me know when we're ready.
Hang on, give Whitney a second.
You can stand with me. Are we ready? All right, Board Member oath of office. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Norwood City School District, Hamilton County, Ohio, to the best of your ability in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Thank you.
Actually, we may need to move up a little bit closer to the microphones. Move this way just a little bit more.
Mr. Fowler, you want to come?
I think we need to be up this way a little closer to the microphones.
Oh.
I'm not sure they can hear you.
Okay. Raise your right hand. You say, "I do if you agree with this statement." Board Member oath of office. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Norwood City School District, Hamilton County, Ohio, to the best of your ability in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
For your service. I would finally. Raise your right hand. Board Member oath of office. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Norwood City School District, Hamilton County, Ohio, to the best of your ability in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Ready for your service? Got some good pictures.
Now that everyone has been sworn in, Ms. Camp House, we can call the roll again.
Mr. Atwood?
Present.
Ms. Fowler?
Present.
Mrs. Cole?
Present.
Mrs. Verica?
Present.
Mr. Taylor?
Present.
Onto 3.0, election of the President. The Board of Education is to elect a President. The President pro tem will continue to preside over the meeting at this time. Any member of the Board of Education may nominate someone for office. It should be noted that nominations do not require a second. If more than one person is nominated for each position, the Treasurer shall publicly call the role of the Board and ask members to vote their choice. The Ohio law requires a majority vote of all members of the Board to elect an officer.
I'll nominate Mr. Atwood.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Amber Ballard.
Any other nominations? All right, I move to closed nominations.
Want to call your name? You're going to state the first name of the person that you wish to have as a President. You are allowed to vote to yourself, as this is unpaid position. Mr. Atwood?
Mr. Atwood.
Ms. Fowler?
Ms. Fowler?
Mrs. Cole?
Mr. Atwood?
Mrs. Verica?
Ms. Ballard.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Atwood.
Thank you, Mr. President Atwood. I'm going to read your oath of office to you again, please. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as President of the Board of Education of the Norwood City School District, Hamilton County, Ohio, to the best of your ability in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Service.
All right. It states here in the agenda that at this point on, the newly elected President will continue on with the meeting. So with that, we'll move on to item number four in our agenda, which is the election of the Vice President. The Board of Education is to elect a Vice President. Any member of the Board of Education may nominate someone for office. It should be noted that nominations do not require a second. If more than one person is nominated for each position, the Treasurer shall publicly call the role of the Board and ask members to vote their choice. The Ohio law requires the majority vote of all members of the Board to elect an Officer. I'd like to open up nominations for the position of Vice President.
I nominate Amber Ballard.
Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Mrs. Cole.
Are there any other nominations? I move to closed nominations. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Mrs. Cole?
Ms. Fowler?
Ms. Fowler?
Mrs. Cole?
Mrs. Cole?
Mrs. Verica?
Ms. Ballard.
Mr. Taylor?
Mrs. Cole.
Cole, will you join me in front for your ceremony oath? Please raise your right hand. Board Member oath of office. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as Vice President of the Board of Education of the Norwood City School District, Hamilton County, Ohio, to the best of your ability in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
All right, moving on in our agenda. Item number five is committee appointment and chairpersons. The Board of President now has the option to appoint members for the standing committees and any ad hoc committees that may be necessary. We do have four standing committees that this Board serves on. I've done, I did this last year. So as President, I will not chair any single committee myself. I will join other committees as required, but I'm not going to lean to any of them as I do think the work is important for all the Board members. With that being said, for the Finance Committee, I am nominating Mr. Taylor. For the Education Committee, I am nominating Ms. Ballard. For the Building and Grounds Committee, I am nominating Mrs. Verica. And for the Policy Committee, I am nominating Mrs. Cole. I'd like to make a motion that the Board approves these committee appointments.
One second.
Is there any discussion on these appointments?
Are you selecting co-chairs for those at this time?
I will do co-chairs, but I'm not appointing those at this, at this time. We can appoint those later. Any other discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Verica?
Sure, yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
With the Board approval, the committee chairs have been set. Moving on to item number six in our agenda is to establish time, date, and location of future school board meetings. So we have a list in the agenda of the meeting dates, and these are all tentative and could be changed as these meeting dates become closer. We'd like to ask for a motion to approve these meeting dates.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes. We are looking at starting in two weeks, on the 27th, to, for the ease of NCT, moving our meetings back over to the high school into the auditorium. It's a little easier for our guests to find us. It's a lot easier for NCT to transport equipment and set up. So moving forward, they wanted to keep those in there. Other than that, the dates and times.
So the reason why we were here in the first place is because of construction in the high school. How is that progressing?
They said that it wouldn't be an issue when I spoke to Steve earlier. And they liked the idea of having it just be downstairs.
The only issue I could see would be during the summer. Because at that time, the air conditioning, we may not have air conditioning, and there will be construction during the summer months.
Okay.
That would make that an issue at the high school.
But during the school year, are there any objections to having it at the middle school auditorium?
Not high school auditorium.
Or the high school mini auditorium is what I meant to say.
And we also talked about potentially using Sharpsburg with the newly renovated auditorium there. They also have equipment. So that could also serve if we didn't want to come up here during the summer months. That's a backup option as well, since it's right there at the Board Office location.
Yeah. Well, the good thing is, is that we've done this in the past, change meeting locations as the meetings become closer. So that, that can all be addressed as we get closer to summer, figuring out where we want to be. I'm in favor of using the mini auditorium in the high school as opposed to this space. I mean, I'm appreciative that we have had this space available to us. I understand why we came here, because of the work that was being done over there. But if that space is available to us and, you know, construction isn't going to impede us or we're not going to impede that progress with our work there, I would like to move back to the high school mini auditorium.
Are we able to bring our rising student families back in if we go back over there?
That was discussed. Because of being able to distance, we got parking right out front. It's a lot easier for guests to find us again. And they wouldn't have to worry about the key card access and someone going up and down three flights.
Yep.
So it would be a lot easier for us to start incorporating those norms again once we're able to.
Great.
And for now, we were talking about spacing on stage. Used to, we were kind of crammed pretty close together. We can take the podium and move it just down and spread out the tables fairly easily across the stage. So that won't be an issue. And we'll be able to welcome back our students.
I would still like to keep the picture of the students up on the screen in case a family doesn't come.
Yes.
Plus, everyone gets to see it. So that way, they'll actually get to be in person and have it on the screen. Okay.
And it's nice in there with the ability to turn the lights down. We'll be able to see projection items a little easier.
All right. So it looks like we are going to begin moving our meetings back to the high school mini auditorium. It would be great if we can invite our rising star students. I'd love to see them and their families.
We will start doing that.
Yeah. All right. Did I make a motion?
We have a motion in a second.
In a second? Okay. I would like to amend my motion to include the changed venue. So whoever seconded that, do you accept the amendment?
I think I motioned to name a second. So I will motion to amend the location.
Second, my second.
Second, your second. I think those are all great ideas. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Verica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
That approved. Moving on to item number seven in the organizational meeting, the Board Service Fund and Proper Public Purpose Appropriation. To align with policy BHD, the Board sets appropriation for the Board Service Fund not to exceed $20,000 for the calendar year 2022 from the General Fund. And to align with policy BHD, the Board sets appropriations for the public, proper public purpose not to exceed $20,000 for the calendar year. I'd like to motion that we accept the appropriation for the Board Service Fund and the Proper Public Purpose.
One second.
Any discussion on this? This is something that we do every year. So if we, you know, go to a conference or, you know, have some sort of an event for the Board, that's where that money would come from, is for this. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Verica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
All right, item number eight in our agenda is to set the bond for the President, Superintendent, and Treasurer. The handling of funds and signing fiscal certificates and requirements and various degreees of the Board President, Superintendent, and Treasurer. The signing of fiscal certificates states that sufficient funds are available to operate a school district. Statute recommends that the President, Superintendent, and Treasurer have a bond and/or employee dishonesty coverage, covering them for any liability in this amount. So they'll be established for at least $20,000. Currently, the Treasurer has $200,000 bond. Superintendent and Board President are covered by OSBA employee dishonesty coverage of $25,000 each, and that coincides with each position's term of office. Can I have a motion that we set the bond?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Verica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
With that approved, we'll move on to item number nine, Authorization of the Treasurer. So actually, we'll combine a bunch of things. So 9.01 is a resolution allowing the Treasurer to request advanced taxes from the county. 9.02 is the approval of the 22, 23 annual modified tax budget. 9.03 is the approval of the OSBA annual membership. Those dues. 9.04 is to authorize the Treasurer to set appropriations before Board authorization. 9.05 is to authorize Treasurer to advance or transfer cash fund to fund before Board authorization. 9.06 is to authorize the Treasurer to invest and activate interim funds. 9.08 is to authorize the Treasurer to pay bills following Norwood's purchasing requirements. 9.08 is to waive requirements to calculate a capital improvement reserve. And 9.09 is to accept the recommendations of the Norwood Records Commission to shred old documents. May I ask for a motion to approve items 9.01 through 9.09?
I'll motion.
One second.
Any discussion on any of those items? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Verica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Item number 10 in our agenda is the Authorization of the Superintendent. 10.01 is the appointment of employees. So the Superintendent shall appoint all employees and report such actions to the Board of Education at the next regular Board meeting. So this is giving us the Superintendent the authority to hire. I'd like to make a motion that we allow this Authorization.
One second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Verica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Item number 11 in our agenda is the appointment of Board Representatives. So there are a number of other Boards that we do interact with. There are five listed, and we've always included an additional one.
I was going to say Avenue's missing from the list.
Yeah. So we will be including Avenue's for Success. So I'm going to nominate for the Great Oaks Board, Ms. Ballard. For the Norwood Community Television Board, Mrs. Cole. For the OSBA Legislative Liaison, myself. And then the Treasurer to the Tax Incentive Review Council, Mrs. Camp House. The Public Records Liaison, Mrs. Heather Cole. And then for Avenue's for Success, Mrs. Verica. May I have a motion to approve these Board Representatives?
I'll motion.
Can I have a second? Any discussion?
Yes. The OSBA Legislative Liaison position, I'm already serving at OSBA at the state with the direct legislative liaisons that we have.
Mm-hmm.
It would, it'd be great to work with you on that committee together so that we can piece items from both sides, whatever you get and then what I bring back from the quarterly meetings.
That's fine. I have no issues with that. Okay. Any other discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Verica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Finally, item number 12 is adjournment of the organizational meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion.
One second.
Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Verica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 6:12. All right. I would like to welcome everybody to the Norwood City School District Committee Meeting for Tuesday, January 11th, 2022. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Present.
Ms. Fowler?
Present.
Mrs. Cole?
Present.
Mrs. Verica?
Present.
Mr. Taylor?
Present.
We've already done the pledge. So item number two is the adoption of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt tonight's agenda as written.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Verica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
All right. Item number three is discussion items, and it looks like we have Sharpsburg Elementary and Primary Principal, Mr. Westendorf, here to share some things with us.
Good evening. And one, thank you Superintendent Vernon, Board Members Sir Henry. Also, a shout out on, I believe it's Board Appreciation Month. Although every month I feel like that. I mean, all the things going on in our world these days. So I wanted to give an update on kind of the things going on at Sharpsburg, but I want to do a little bit of this time with the, you know, of course, the wonderful things we get going on. I wanted to kind of open your eye to some of the data and the things that we use. Initially, some people hear school data. The most exciting thing in the world. Ms. Chess and myself, we love data. We're data juppies. It drives our instruction. And as you'll see at the end, it doesn't turn up kids in the numbers. It turns it into science. And there's certainly a piece to that as well. So I'd be crazy if I didn't talk about our newest recognition, and that's from the U.S. News and World Report. Previously, they had talked, they did rankings on colleges, universities, and high schools. This year, they did it on elementary schools. I initially was skeptical, so I looked at it and said, you know, what's a way they can find the data and things like that? Should have been some negative. But I did find out that they were ranking their, they were ranking their scores. They were ranking their scores based on student work, which is something we can control. But we can't control the students we give, but we can control what we do to grow. And that's for every student, all ability levels. So as you see, well, you have the top 16% rate ranking of Ohio schools. We're reading American efficiency ranks. We're in the top 30 of the state. And we're reading American performance factors, which is, again, based on the growth that is expected of a student versus who they've actually achieved. And finally, this is during our instruction. I do. So it's something that's even more, I'm more proud of this. My staff taking the steps back to, of course, changing educational environment, but making it irregardless of the challenges. So definitely at any point of pride. So to get those kind of recognitions and obviously for any school to continue to grow your students and grow yourself as an educator, what are we using data for in terms of driving our instruction? Of course, we're looking for trends in the data to play in our whole class lessons. And I use the MAPS as an assessment that we give. Map some of those assessments that collects data, just about what we use it from second through, I believe, high school. And to me, it's the most valuable data we give. If we didn't get a state testing their mandates, I would be using this in my school, as frequent as we do. Again, you can use that data, but look at how we can form small groups to meet kids at their level and how we can grow individuals to better. Of course, we're always collecting data on a regular basis. And data at any grade level is a way to share and discuss growth with your students, whether that's a first grader making a bar graph of growth, or high schooler you're talking to them about, you know, detailed skill areas that they need to improve on. So when we look at MAPS, again, MAPS is an assessment given to all students from second grade on up, specific content areas. And this teacher, fourth grade teacher, one fourth grade teacher, this is the data she might get that's fairly general. You know, here's our students that are above the 50 percentile. Okay, great, that's nice. But what we like to dive into is individual data. to dive into is individual data. So obviously, this is a student, there's their name on their Facebook link, unintentionally. And this is a chance to look at a kid as an individual. One, you know, this is accessible for parents. But two, we look at this as teachers, we meet as teams. We meet with our T V T coaches, which is teacher-based teams, and those are coaches from the county. And we look at, one, individual students and how they learn. So this student, we're looking at, so they achieve very high, but we see low growth. So this student is somewhat good. They're already a high achiever, and a lot of times this is harder kids to develop. So what is our intentional instruction to grow that my student? So things we can kind of look at. This student, their, you know, one area of focus is their vocabulary and acquisition of data. I kind of laughed to myself, is when I was teaching, that was always my weakest point as a teacher, so it's just coming back on. And then, an area of strength, literary text, key ideas and details. So to me, you're not just looking at weaknesses, you're looking at strengths to grow those as well. So this student, this would be their growth marked over a period of time. You can see winter '21. Typically, all winters, it seems to me, I could be wrong at the dip, but this is a student's growth that we're all asked. So reading two and a half years. What else I like, but I also try to be cautious with it, with as an educator, with my staff, is they sometimes have predictors on that. And while data's great, and I have it at the end, I don't like the fact that sometimes data will predict, you know, this child will score this, or this child will get this on the ACT based on the score in fourth grade. Well, you know, as educators, that's not a word. How can it be better? You know, what are the challenges along the way that we can help to overcome? So we try to get careful with that, but we do like seeing individual. Now, the resource, of course, is from the state, from ODE. This would be our fall scores. So I'm looking at my third grade English language learners, which, with the third grade guarantee, we got to be careful about, and very, very purposeful with our work, so students need that benchmark. Thankfully, this is getting better to read the data year after year after year. And what you'll see that has helped us, if I'm an individual teacher, I can look at, and it reads, it says five items in which students perform best. It literally tells me which question is up there, the numbers 1, 3, 5, 8, 11. Obviously, I can't see the question, because it's a state test, but I can refer back to that. It'll tell me, this question was vocabulary, this question was, you know, writing, this question was this. You know, as teachers nowadays, it's a great way to collect data, well, it's already collected before. And then, to me, five items of which students perform the worst. So if you have, let's see, 60 kids, you know, they didn't do well on these questions, and they cover this content, that's something going to be a focus for me. So this would be an individual student. And they actually scored quite well, but this first area, reading informational texts, that they're near proficient. So this is probably their area where I want to focus off with them. And again, I can look at questions that they got correct, again, look at the question itself, the type of question it is. This is an area they did well, same idea. And then writing's always a tricky one. Student, they said they're above proficient, wonderful, but they scored four points out of a 10-point question. So they must have hit some key points, but they clearly missed some other things. So that's something I want to look at, whether I create an assessment myself, or use something that's already available. Other data sources we use, Google Forms. You know, I was thinking of the same third grade teacher. She creates her tests on a Google Form. She formats them to look like what they'll see on the state test. And again, the state test isn't driving where the standards are. If you're driven by the standards, you'll get there. And then, you know, a lot of things that automatically creates important forms, she's done the work ahead of time. And you'll have to look at your other great resources we have, many teachers use. I have, this is my favorite one, this is an old school Excel file. Teacher uses this on his assessment they created themselves. Once they mark ones and zeros for correct and wrong, it breaks it down by the standards, because they did the work ahead of time. And now they can look at their own teaching, and obviously, individual students. So what I will say, what data does for a student, is schools' growth, and make sure students don't fall through the cracks. You know, we're measuring our effectiveness. This is a curriculum that we're using, this intervention that I'm doing with the student, working as well as good. You know, it's a way to use resources. We have these needs here, this grade, or this room. Can I put in extra need there, or an intervention specialist, or a title teacher somewhere. Promotes accountability for me as a teacher. When I see that data go to bad, it's telling me all I need to know. If you're hard on yourself like I am, I see the low data, it drives me a hole in my head. It does allow for student, teacher, and family discussions about their growth, shows trends, not necessarily solutions. We still have that piece to go on. And it certainly creates advances and drives interventions. So every six to eight weeks, we're looking at what we're doing with individual kids. Are they getting what they need? If they're growing, do we keep that? If they're not growing, what are we going to do? In fact, we'll have those in the first time. What data does not do, as much as I love it, it's never replacing a personal connection over for the students. While data's the science of teaching, the art of teaching is, is what teachers do and what staff does with their class, with their students. Again, it doesn't turn a student to just a number. It makes, you know, data does not make your lesson engaging and exciting. That's what wonderful individual teachers do. It won't measure your soft skills and your interpersonal skills. And it's certainly, like I said before, it's not going to define a student's path. But again, it gives us the drive to, and when you really feel like you've hit the peak with data is when you get students talking about their own words. Not that you want a third grader assessing their math scores, but you want a third grader in that room. So just a shout out to my staff, these are the things I've seen in the last six years. It's been great just supporting them and making sure that. Ms. Chesson, she's the gear behind it. Any questions? Want to fundate your question?
Any questions for Mr. Westendorf?
But congratulations on that great award. That's impressive. And we did, we have a sign outside the school.
Two.
Two signs.
All right. We'll move on to item number four in the agenda, which is the Education Committee. Looks like we have two field trips coming up. One is the MBFCA Social Justice, Social Justice Student Summit with Mr. Pitzer, and then the NHS Silhouettes have a field trip with Mr. Robinson.
And they are both coming up before the 27th meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have any issues with those field trips?
It's a tongue twister.
It is a tongue twister. Yeah. All right. We'll move on to item number five, Personnel. Superintendent Runan.
Yes. We have two individuals, Brian Pitzer and John Cole, who are getting a supplemental contract to supervise the weight room for student training. So that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Item number six, Building and Grounds Committee. I know these are last year's appointments, but Mrs. Cole?
Okay. So our first one, we have the Norwood Civil Service. They're requesting the high school cafeteria for the police officer civil service exam, February 23rd, from 5:45 to 8:15 p.m. We also have Pope Athletics. They're requesting our softball field for youth baseball games, Saturdays, May 7th through June 18th, and Wednesdays, June 15th and 22nd, from 12 to 6. And finally, Norwood Not Whole, as always, requesting Shea Stadium for opening day, April 9th, from 10 to 12:30.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about any of those facility requests? We'll move on to item number seven in our agenda, the Finance Committee. Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Mr. President. The CFO report, all monthly financial reports and change order listings are attached for your review. 7.02, Appropriation Resolution, our budget for the year. 7.03, S H P Amendment to their agreement. When we made the decision to not complete renovations at all the elementaries at the same time, we knew it would extend our renovation project timeline. This agreement extends our architecture review period another year to complete the high school and Williams Avenue renovations. S H P is only charging us half of what they should be charging us, so that was nice of them. And 7.04, Center Point Elevator Extensions. The Center Point Elevator project at the high school is seeing some construction delays due to supply chain issues. First, the actual elevator was delayed. Now the elevator doors are going to be delayed. Our substantial completion date will now be March 11th of '22. However, these change orders, they affect the date only, they do not increase our costs. So it's just a delay. And that's all I have for finance.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about any of the finance items?
If you have a question, it's not necessarily finance, but it is related to the elevator. Since we are going back over to that area for our meetings, will that elevator be accessible to us to get our guests inside door, without them having to go all the way around the building to use the elevator to get to the second floor?
Yes.
After the March meeting, I assume, if they're on, if they stay on target?
Yes, for evening meetings, although somebody will, will have to use their fob to allow them access.
I just wanted to make sure, because that would be a really good thing to announce when we get back down there, that guests will no longer have to go all the way around the building to get to the second floor if they need that access.
All right. Any other questions? And then finally, last item on the agenda is Adjournment. May I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion. I'll second.
Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Ms. Ratwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.